All right, we head to the agenda. Is there a motion either to approve the agenda or to move any items off the agenda or to modify it? Michael Fiocco moved and was fully seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, approved before the agenda. The consent agenda is now set before us, which is their motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pamela Baldwin and seconded by Michael Fiocco. This approves minutes of February 8th in the financial report that was included in your package. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. There are no persons signed up for public expression this evening, and so the next thing on the agenda is mayor update. You know, we all experiment just a little bit with what the meeting and the agenda looks like, and I've been talking about the matters that have come before me as far as attending meetings concerned, just because I have been so overwhelmed in the last two months with the number of meetings that is possible to attend. I did go on the website today for the mayor of Cary, and he does a very interesting thing, and he does all of that on his website. And so I may look into establishing that so that we don't bore everybody to death with the reading of all of the things I've been doing. But since our last meeting in February on the 8th, I did attend the two-day retreat for the essentials of municipal government and was thoroughly educated by the League of Municipalities and the School of Government. We had then the next day, the board retreat. The day after that was an EDC meeting. The next week, we had an elected board, joint board meeting with the EDC. On the 19th, we were pleased to have the secretary of the Department of Transportation for North Carolina visit us here in Pittsburgh. Michael Fiocco had arranged that and was kind enough to invite me and Brian Grisbeck to attend as well. And it was very nice to be able to show the secretary the beautiful town of Pittsburgh. And over the weekend, I went to the second in the meeting on racial justice and meet the candidates tonight and thought to myself, how wonderful it was that I was not one of the candidates. That was a real treat. Upcoming, we have a meeting on the 25th for the tax assessment district with our legislative delegation, and on the 3rd of March, Triangle J Council of Governments meeting with the mayors. So are there any other meetings that people would like to report on at this time? Or would you rather wait until the mayor's concerns? I know you've given a climate change meeting, have you not?
No. That actually was postponed, and I'm trying to think whether that's one of the factors of this, but yeah, it doesn't happen yet. I think we can give updates on the reviews. The RPO, I must say that I did not attend, having just been out of work for several days on my back. I decided the better thing to do that day was to go to work. So Jeff, attended, I don't know if Jeff can give us any update on the RPO meeting?
Yes, we had a RPO meeting down Sanford, and the upcoming month and a half is going to be kind of a critical time for the town and the RPO in itself, is that each county within the RPO will start ranking the priority of projects. So we'll be working with Silver City, Chatham County, and Pittsburgh to rank the top 10 projects for the next two-year cycle. And this is something that has happened back in 2014, this 2016. And once I get those projects, the priority list, then I'll share that with you all, and then we'll have meetings with, again, Chatham County and Silver City to start ranking those projects. That's really the big item definitely.
Thank you. The mayor mentioned the secretary did visit, and the goal of that was simply to introduce him and his new staff to downtown visual planning. His predecessor had made substantial commitments to the town on, and we wanted to just present that to him, and I can see some faces, some names, and I'm very happy to say that he backed up and stood behind the commitment that the previous secretary made. So it was, I thought, a very good meeting. Of note, Kyle Touchstone, the EDC president, the EDC president, plus two attendants. So Diana's selecting handiwork with the phone over, and I think his first day is leap day, 29th. So, so I...
Anybody else?
Actually, I apologize. We did postpone the climate change meeting, but then we did finally meet, and the date totally escapes me, but it was a fairly uneventful meeting. We decided intention as a group not to make any decisions, not to, for example, elect leadership, because we wanted to try and start to get to know one another. And one of the topics of discussion that I think was probably the most substantive and of interest to this town is that body kind of began to recognize, it was a consensus, I'd say, we need, the county needs to do a baseline assessment of where we stand now with regard to greenhouse gas emissions. And there was some indication that that had happened before. Students from Dick University have done that in the past, and so after it was made to dig that up, and the report was just posted yesterday, and so it's dated 2008. Significantly different, because the climate change dramatically increased than Chatham County. But those are the things that are in the works with the county climate change advisory committee. Thank you.
And let us move to old business. The first item on the agenda is the request from Waste Industries for renewal of the solid waste contract. Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Curry. You have agenda packed this evening, some of my notes regarding the last meeting and its discussion, and we also have attached to that the letter from Waste Industries, which I think begins to hopefully get in the right direction of addressing some of the issues that you had raised with the company and their service and the agreement during the last meeting. We have this evening, Mr. Davidson, who also attended our last meeting from Waste Industries, as well as two of his colleagues, that I have previously, at least once previously, discussed the agreement. And so I guess at this point, it would be really up to you, how you want to move forward with the discussion on it, certainly being very capable, I think, of trying to answer some of the questions that you have, and maybe going into a little bit more detail and getting down in the weeds at that time, some of the things you guys are concerned about, and see what else we need to do moving forward, one way or the other.
So may I ask the board, like to address questions to the folks from Waste Industry? Before we start from that, I would like to note that in this week's paper, right next to the bogus article that says Pittsburgh extends agreement with Waste Industries, which did not happen at the last meeting, but nonetheless, right above it was recycling education program to start Thursday in Silver City. And this is exactly what I talked about last time, which was educating the public. I thought one of the interesting things that they had to say was, when in doubt, throw it out, which I thought differed from a little bit from what we might have gathered. But anyway, but you know, we can have a session like that, we could do an article in the paper, and you know, everything you ever wanted to know about recycling, and you were afraid to ask, or something like that. So if we could work towards that kind of public education, that would be wonderful.
I think it also could be great to do some presentations, maybe to some of the larger businesses in the town, like I know Fairesen, there's a lot of confusion about what can and can't be, and there's a lot of recycled materials that are generated in these big places. Information, people are clear about what they can and can't. On that same note, I contacted Lyle Estor, out of her bathroom, about putting up oil collector gear, and that would offer that sort of oil container to Rose Creek, so.
Oh, that's great. Okay.
And one of the things that, you know, we were looking through the contract, and it talks about the base rate being based on a fuel charge of $3.89 a gallon of fuel. I think last week was $1.94 per gallon, so we were trying to see how that could possibly affect the cost of the service and translate to a savings to the town. Would you mind talking about that?
Good, happy to do it. Good evening, my name is Ben Hobbins, our regional manager for Waste Industries, and work very closely with Mr. Davidson here, who's their general manager. And I was excited to be here this evening. First off, just like to say thanks for the opportunity to service Pittsburgh, we do appreciate it. But to answer your question, yes, the base rate's $3.89 a gallon. I think in the agreement, in our understanding of the agreement, there's a reason, a clause for that, that we may implement that fuel surcharge in the second part of the contract. We did not do so at that point in time, and I guess what we have done differently since the inception was the pricing also refers to a different consumer price index, which is the water, trash, and sewer index. And shortly after us beginning this contract, the Bureau of Labor Statistics released a more defining index for our industry's CPI, so garbage and trash collection. And if you do a comparison of those two indices, the garbage and trash collection is significantly lower than the water, trash, and sewer. Over the last five years that we've been servicing the town, in some years, that's the difference has been as much as 3%. So what we had seen, and I think the chart that we included in the letter, I think helps illustrate is per unit rate, garbage and trash collection CPI, if you follow that term, that's how the rate has changed over time, using the garbage trash index alongside of it. That would have been the progression of the rates, had we used the water, sewer, and trash CPI, in addition to having the fuel surcharge in place, the way the contract reads. And so what I was trying to illustrate here with this chart for you is, if you look off to the right, you can see there's a pretty considerable savings, whether you look at per unit or on the annualized version of how the approach that we've had so far through the years, this has, I think, benefited Pittsburgh versus that fuel surcharge. I would recognize that, to absolutely your point, the fuel surcharge would offer credit if we were doing it at this point in time, but I think the savings that the CPI, by using a lower scale test on, has actually benefited the town in a greater degree. And we would suspect make it more predictable in the future of what we're looking at.
And I think the clause, you're proposing that this fuel surcharge clause remain in the contract such that, should you choose to exercise it, it would be contractually, you may, as the word...
Yes, yes, I guess, you know, our extension request, we're going to look at using that garbage and trash collection an additional year, in potential the second year, under two-year extension request, to keep it consistent. The big question is, what will fuel pricing do over the next two years? And I'd like to say I know, I think everybody in America would like to know that answer, but I don't know. If it goes up, then actually having it in place, I think, would increase the cost to the town. If it remains low, then there is obviously a little bit of that.
And I was looking at the calculation, how to put a number to the savings that I think would be representative, if in fact you were to use the surcharge in the direction of the price right now, and basically the difference is about $2 per gallon. And I think the calculation says, well, you're going to halve that.
Right.
So we would recognize a savings of $1 per gallon.
Per, uh-huh, per, yeah.
And I think you communicated to Mr. Grisbeck today, your average mileage, because it would be based on that mileage, of somewhere, I don't know, 544 and 171.
Or gallons, it's based on the gallons.
Right. So I think that translates to a savings if, in fact, we were, if you were to exercise that option, of somewhere in the neighborhood of $8,000 a year. So if we were looking at that number by using CPI that you did use, save 17,000, if you were also to exercise the clause, we could see another $8,000 savings.
No, actually, the calculation for the trash, water, and sewer, including the fuel surcharge in that, so...
So somehow, $8,000 would affect that favor?
If that 8,000 would be built into that 17,000, okay.
So take that away, and that would be the savings based on the CPI.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think that's what we're trying to aim at, right? Because a lot of mathematics are trying to illustrate to you guys that using the garbage and trash is probably a fair measurement and provides a longer-term savings to the
And you say that's more industry standard now?
It is. It wasn't available in 2011, it came out a week later that year, that Bureau of Labor Statistics created that index. It's probably why it's not, you know, something we agreed to early on with the contract, I imagine. I wasn't here at the time, but it's something that's kind of become the norm, being used in our industry. Because we don't deal in water and sewer, but previously, that was the best index available.
And it's tracking at a lesser increase than the water, sewer category?
Historically, it's been about 2%. And I say for the last five years, and if you look at the trash, water, sewer index, you're probably looking at 4% to 5%. That was a reason for mentioning earlier, that over the years, I think it was the third year of the agreement, there was about a 3% spread between the two, so rather significant.
Other questions from the board?
Well, I need to make one observation about the fuel surcharge, because everything has its inverse. You know, the risk to the town spending a lot more money based on this fuel surcharge and the price increases is high. So if it goes to $4 a gallon as opposed to $3.89, the difference to the town is $0.6 per gallon, not $0.1. So the numbers don't expand as rapidly as you might think without doing the math.
I guess maybe to add to that, I think just doing our math, I think it's around the $2.79 per gallon price range. If fuel goes back to that point or higher, you know, you get back to this point where having a fuel surcharge in place makes the service more costly than going with the garbage and trash collection. So I think the risk is, does fuel get to that $2.74? I don't know, but that's kind of the breaking point when you didn't have...
That's really helpful. $2.74?
$2.79, sorry.
Michael, I really appreciate you leading as part of the discussion. I have asked around, inquired informally, and because of my background in solid waste management, I really admire the work that y'all are doing, that your guys are doing. Great crews, always willing to step up, and so the quality is fantastic, and the pricing is in line, according to the sources I spoke with. And given the discussion about the fuel surcharge and the risk that we bear, or the lack of risk, I should say, thank you again for highlighting that, I am much more comfortable with my understanding of the contract and the idea of renewing it. There was a, something additional that I wanted to ask, but it slipped my mind at the moment, but, yeah, are there other questions or concerns? The adjustment of $2.1%? No. Oh, so, yes, the point that you highlighted, the kind of tipping point, $2.39, at which it would perhaps be a greater risk to us. That's very helpful to me. I study energy and pay closer attention to natural gas than I do petroleum diesel. But my understanding, for the benefit of the board and the public, is that the same technologies that have made natural gas so cheap, hydraulic fracturing and the horizontal drilling, are also a big part of what's driving down prices for liquid fuels, for petroleum, diesel, gasoline, and the distillates. And at least in the electricity world, expectations that those cheap prices for natural gas are going to continue as far as the eye can see. And it's because it's almost a vicious cycle. The technology improves, makes extraction cheaper, and so on and so forth, and it really accelerates itself. But we are in a situation of kind of energy deflation, energy price deflation. I don't pretend to understand that. It's conceivable we may see a situation that would so severely disrupt the energy markets that the industry might shed capacity, and then there might be shortages, but I don't think that's very likely. I guess what I'm getting at is that I think it's pretty likely that we're going to continue to see low prices, perhaps lower prices, as far as the eye can see, especially on diesel fuel. But again, nobody has a crystal ball, and there's some really, really sharp minds paying a lot of money to try and figure this out. I think that I would be comfortable, though, all that said, I would be comfortable with the two-year extension on the contract. And I don't think it's necessary for us to contemplate expanding the service with electronic waste collection. Pretty sure that we're good with the county handling that, and I don't think we want to explore composting at this time, but I'd be happy to hear from the town manager if he thinks otherwise, if maybe we should consider expanding to composting services.
Yeah, that's something we can price out, and we have, we collect yard waste currently at our facility. You know, to a large extent, that in a way is kind of going to waste. There are some, you know, kind of, there are some people that do come and take it away and compost it on their own, whether or not they want to provide that value-added service for people, or maybe seek contracting or third-party assistance to help do it, something we should consider later on. We can certainly start to answer your question, we can certainly start pricing that out and seeing if that's a service that you'd like to provide.
I think people would want to take that down, especially as compared to the early days.
But I would be interested in knowing about the, where you say you all do not handle the liquid items, cooking oil. I would be interested in learning some more about that, because I know too much about these certain oils that they do not, you know, they do not...
Right. And my thing is, if we can talk with Lyle about that, we can find out what they can use, and just find out how to have one here for the town law, to do what can be done. That would be part of the education process.
And that's also what I was interested in, that education for the public, how soon we can get anyone...
Well, we met with Brian about a few weeks ago, so we were underway, we were working with our RV team to get some energy together. We felt that we could bring it to Brian and have him review it, see if it's acceptable in him, in ours to, to understand what can be recycled, what can't, and, you know, maybe some ideas to increase volumes. So I guess at that point in the letter was just to have, meet with whatever groups you'd like, if that's working with the board members or members of the town staff, we stand ready to help out and be a part of that.
I expect there'd be a number of civic groups in the area that might be interested, Kiwanis or folks like that, but it does occur to me that, in your second paragraph from your letter, you expressed a willingness to help us reach our goals on recycling. I don't think we have any. And certainly, I'm assuming that recycling gains you more money than landfilling costs would, that the sale of recycled materials would be more beneficial to you as a businessperson, and it's certainly more beneficial to the environment.
Yeah, I would say that has been true over the last few years, here in the last 12 months, it's become a drastically different story. The low price of fuel has actually decreased the value of plastics, and a lot of manufacturers are finding buying new plastics is actually a cheaper alternative than using recycled products. And so the commodity markets are really depressed at the moment, and a lot of recyclers have gone away from accepting free volumes or paying for volumes to rather significant charges. In some cases, the charges to recycle the material, bring it to a processor, exceed the landfill's cost. I know that's currently true, and in the Greensboro market, it's about a $42.50 a ton charge to get recycling processed. You know, dispose of a ton of garbage in a landfill, it sits in a little dirty patch, so it has changed dramatically. There was an article in the News & Observer, I think about a week, or in last week, kind of talking about how that market's dramatically changed. Our business has always been more focused on the collection side of it, and so we don't do a lot of processing ourselves. We take it to processors, but we're seeing dramatic changes in that marketplace across our industry, not just our businesses, it's the whole industry experiencing that. So it's something that's going to probably develop more as time goes on. Things like glass have been looked at, and some plants around the country are removing glass from the acceptable items list, because they're just having difficulty to sell that material once it's cleaned. And glass is pretty abrasive, so it tends to tear up the equipment that is used to process those recyclers.
So does that mean that ostensibly, everything in the blue can and the green can would go to the same site?
No, no. If we've committed to providing recycle, we will continue that and ensure that those items are recycled. I'm just trying to paint the picture that there's, that economics are shaping pretty drastically here.
Well, then maybe our town staff should, or the residents perhaps, make a definitive plan on what kind of recycling goals we need to have. I mean, it would be helpful for us to know, for example, the number of tons that you collected from us, so that we can perhaps seek to do better than that in the future. So as long as we continue with the information exchange, that would just be excellent.
I recently read a really interesting article about the community that took on recycling, and it got people very excited about the topic, about the farmers and sharing. But I was going to say one thing about the composting, one thing the county does, which you guys may be aware of, that they, they own composters, you know, I mean, something to think about, too, rather than us handling the compost, just making it easy for other people, so we don't have something to think about.
Is the board ready then to make a decision, or is there a motion to be made?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we, I'll provide the town manager to finalize and renew the term.
Second? Motion made by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Pamela Baldwin. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, if you have any questions, you're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. For the record, I'd like to also know that I think that the citizens of Pittsburgh appreciate the service. I think you were providing a very good service. We're not receiving complaints. I have no complaints, so. Yep. Please pass along our gratitude to the guys.
We certainly will.
Hard work, but I'm honored. Thank you.
Thanks very much. The next matter on the agenda is the report of the retreat that we had. Copy of the remarks for summary of that retreat were in your agenda package, and Brian Grisbeck offered the suggestion that we might want to make an acceptance of the report. Is there any discussion of the report, or does the board wish to reflect its acceptance of the report? Mr. Grisbeck, was there a particular reason that you wanted that acceptance indicated in the record?
Yes, actually, thank you. The reason would be so that you formally, I guess, recognized that the report, the discussion took place, that this report accurately represents the discussion with us of your knowledge. Moving forward, staff will take this information and...
Moving forward, staff will take this information and direct us not only from a budgetary standpoint, but, you know, thinking longer term than that on some of the goals and things that you guys want to focus on. So I think it's helpful from that perspective to make sure we're all on the same page. That this retreat is reflective of the discussion that you attended. And these are things that you would like to see moving forward. You know, cap which, or at least progress made over the course of the next year or a few years.
And just for the record, it was interesting to see that at the top of the list was the extension of sewer capacity. Next, the UDO, affordable housing wastewater treatment, long-term plan for assessing water needs, the Sanford wastewater line, which I suppose is the same thing, increasing sewer capacity. And then financial analysis for the growth that we're about to experience. Are there any questions or is the board pleased with the report?
I think in general, it reflects the meeting that we had. Yeah, it's obviously a way to determine whether this is accurate. But I trust that it is, the accounting of the numbers. My recollection is it's pretty close to the priorities that I recall, so. I have no reason not to believe it is accurate.
I think hearing very.
It's also kind of nice to have Mr. Long at our still table since he's so familiar with problems and things that are ahead of us.
And maybe next time, I felt like in a sense, we, it's not a matter of wasting his time because he needed to hear the reports from the staff members. But that did take so long that he had less time to work with the board as far as the continuity that we, I think, are seeking to be able to make decisions from here.
Yeah, he was an excellent facilitator. And I really appreciated his guidance of the day. And looking at the listing of priorities, it lines right up with what I think we were all hearing today. It was a very rigorous process. But it allowed some of our, you know, the things that were itching in our brains and the things that were swelling our hearts about our town, our concerns about our town, allowed those to come out in a really positive way. So I move that we accept and approve the report.
That's better. Moved by John Vonnant and seconded by Jake Farrell that we approve the report from the retreat February 11, 2016. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yes.
We can always have seconds to choose where, you know, to, to do, you know, just to give all the issues to report because we're done.
Yeah. Is that something the board would like to pursue? Having a follow-up that just is dedicated to board interactions on the issues? Perhaps we can work towards getting one. Sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration rehabilitation project is next on the agenda. And Frank Royal, I believe you have an update for us.
I do. So this is just a follow, a very brief follow-up for you all tonight on where we are with the INI work and the application, or the plans and specs going to the state. So Hydrostructures has been working very hard to meet schedule, which basically is that we have to deliver a product to the state by Monday of the week. But we're going to deliver it this Friday. So we have a nice map to show you at some point. There it is. It's kind of hard to see it.
Fred, it's very hard to see.
Yeah. Can you zoom here a little?
Sure.
I guess I just want to make a few points about it. So basically, it's got some symbols on it. And if you can see the purple triangles as an example, there's one. So what those represent are, based on our smoke testing, essentially broken service laterals, broken cleanouts on public and private property. And those, those little guys contribute, we think, to a lot of our problems. Not, maybe not a majority, but a significant amount. So what we've done is we've done some statistical analysis of where they're located. And about 60% of them are on public property and about 40% are on private property. So we have to make a determination at some point when we begin the bidding documentation on, does the town do some of this work? Or do we just lump that in with a major contract? There's pros and cons about the decision. My gut feeling is if we can get the town to do it, if John's got the staff and the schedule, it would provide a better kind of customer service on the private property side. We could work with each customer on their property as opposed to some out-of-town contractor moving in and doing things with their vegetable garden or what have you. And it would save us a few, a few dollars on the contract. We would have to come up with an agreement with the property owner though because we're working on private property. We'd have to make sure they understand this is not a town pipe. Once we replace it, it's a private pipe. But we are basically improving our system collectively by replacing their faulty service line. So we can talk about that later. But that's generally where we're at on the 40% piece. The 60% piece, we believe, should be done by a contractor because it's in the public right-of-way and they could get it done faster.
Right. Are you saying that you, the sewer services that are associated with these laterals?
The laterals are the sewer services.
Right. Right. Just trying to use the language that folks all understand. Are you saying that you're attributing 40% of our impact to those types of failures versus the public system, so to speak?
No, I'm sorry. The purple triangles, they're one piece of the puzzle.
Right.
And so in this piece of the puzzle, 40% of those specific pieces are on private property. And 60% are on right-of-way or public easements. So that's just that piece. So the next piece are the red circles, which are manholes. We've identified a lot of manholes throughout town that need to be rehabilitated in one way or another. Some of them just need grout and joints. Some of them need to be replaced. Some of them could be lined. So we've decided, we've selected the red ones that we believe we can afford to fix in this round of work because we only have a certain budget. And depending on how the bids come back, we might have to scale back or we might scale up. But we picked the highest priority based on, if you recall, we had flow monitors in the system in different sewer sheds around town. So these are based on where we went in because the flows were so high that we went in with smoke and then video. So we've called it down to these as our top priority for this funding round. There's plenty more out there to do in future CIPs and what have you. But that'll talk about in just a second. So that's the second fixable item. And the third are these thick green lines, which are the gravity sewer pipes themselves that we're recommending we line them. And I brought an example of what a liner looks like. You literally slip it in. It goes in as a bag that's deflated and you pull it through. And then you pressurize it and it has grout. And it sticks to the wall of pipe and it becomes a nice new pipe inside the old pipe. And it doesn't leak anymore. And so the thick red lines are, or the thick green lines are where we would recommend doing pipelining.
Do those pipes also have sewer services?
They do.
Okay.
So we'd have to work with that.
Where they are and go cut them back out.
Right. There's a whole technique on doing, yeah. So those are the three components of what we're proposing to do. And, you know, we have, we have roughly a half a million dollar budget and roughly $50,000 is going to go to soft costs that we're spending right now that we'd be reimbursed for. So we have approximately $380,000 or so thousand dollars or a little less to do the actual work. So we hope the bidding process is favorable to Pittsburgh. We hope that there's, we hope there's some hungry utility contractors out there that will compete for this. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that process goes later. Yes? The, so our loan, our loan is $494,000.5. Our soft costs currently are roughly $50,000, $60,000 to do all this work to get the project submitted to the state for review. So we'll see how much we have available to do the actual work when we've finished all of our soft costs. So what the benefits of this project are, as you all know, it'll help our wastewater treatment plan. It also will extend our current sewer capacity. It won't increase it, but it'll extend our current capacity by reducing wet weather flows. So the goal is to, you know, push required extensions as far out as possible. And it impacts our allocation availability for new development coming in. So another important piece about this whole project is we're going to have enough information after this to put together CIP projects for the future in a regular budget. We've already started prioritizing what else we want to do based on the data. We have a lot more pipelining to do, as an example. And there's more manholes to fix and there's more cleanouts. So we just have to put together an asset management plan and lump out CIP projects in the future. Because, you know, keeping this moving forward with momentum is a very good idea, I believe. So what else can I tell you? We're going to put the project in on Friday to the state. They will review it for, I think, two to three months. And we will hear back from them. And at that point, we will begin the bid packaging, bid documentation, and do final engineering. Again, more soft costs. And after we do the engineering and the state approves the engineering plans, then we can put together our bid package and get busy advertising to get this done. So.
Will the bid package include the triangles?
Yes. Well, we can decide public only, all, that kind of thing. So we would have to be willing to step up as a town to do whatever work we don't include in the bid package. If it's doable. I haven't discussed any of this with John Petit or Mr. Grisbeck. So we just have to go through some discussions on what it would take and policies and that sort of thing. But we've come a long way. We know more about our system now than we've known for, since 2010, I believe. So we've come a long way. Some of these big rains have really helped us understand what's going on. We have a lot of manholes that are too low and they go underwater. And so we need to elevate manholes. We have a lot of other issues like that that we can address.
Fred, do we have like these triangles, more like in top priority, least priority or anything like that with repairs?
We do. And we have them listed out in a spreadsheet. And we visibly looked at them.
Is that how this contract would go? Maybe we would do top priority first and try to do a certain area?
Top priority first. Yep. Some of the, some of the triangles represent maybe just caps that are missing. Others represent the whole system needs to be replaced. So you've got to trench it out and replace it. And so it's all, it's all, you know. Obviously, replacing a cap is a good hot top priority because that's all you got to do.
Right.
But then you get, if you get into digging, that's a whole nother story.
I guess some of them are in yards and some of them are on the pavement.
Right. Yeah, we have, we have good notation on there. Are they in grass or are they under pavement? Thank goodness, most of them are in long, grassy areas. But sometimes you got to rip out a sidewalk to fix the whole pipe and things start happening. You get involved in cost.
You know, I've long realized.
No, it's PVC.
It is.
All the services are PVC. I say all, I, that's not true. A lot of services are probably clay, the oldest ones.
But private property is going to be a real problem, so you've got to be careful with that.
Exactly. So, you know, we have to decide what policy to roll with on the purple triangles that are on private property.
In terms of actual inflow volumes, you're, can you speak a little bit more about your prioritization there?
Yes, so we had, we had 12 sewer basins that we looked at with the meters. And we prioritized those down to six. I don't know all the numbers in terms of flows, but based on the metering data, because what they did was they had to take base flow and then look at the increase in flow and look at the rainfall amount. And then they calculated the amount of rainfall going into the pipes. And then, so we could isolate how much actual rainfall got in the pipes. So we narrowed that down from 12 to six basins. These projects are in those six basins. So that's how the prioritization first worked, kind of the matrix worked. There's, like I mentioned earlier, there's other pipes that we do need to do work on. But we thought these were a higher priority, under the affordability piece. The line, I'll give you an example that's not in this project. The main gravity sewer, Robeson Creek, between Highway 87 at the bridge all the way to the wastewater plant. It's about a quarter mile long. That pipe, we need to videotape because we suspect the whole thing needs this. But we, it's not affordable in this project. So that's an example of a CIP down the road. So.
Just from what you've shared with us, I would imagine that the inflows from a manhole cover that gets inundated in a rain is going to be much higher.
Correct.
Inflow than even a very long pipe that has a lot of cracks in it.
Right. And we looked at that with the flow meter data and it does come to fruition. If we have got, or manholes that have slip seals and just goes right in the slip seal. As, you know, when the water comes up, it just flows right in freely. So there are some other pieces the town could look at doing just routinely or programmatically. You know, let's go around and start fixing our manholes one by one whenever we can. That's another thing we could look at doing, that we don't involve a contractor and lots of money and everything. So there's a lot of things I think the town can do and there's a lot of things the town cannot do, such as this. But this initial identification process is very important to understand the system and then understand priorities and then cost and figure out how to move forward. Sure.
Fred, I guess it's because I'm brand new at all that I'm not really clear on how much stormwater is actually getting into the sewer system. Is there a, since we've done all this metering and testing, do we know that?
We do. It'll be in a report. I don't have the numbers on the top of my head. But we'll know based on the meter data how much stormwater is getting in. And we'll, as soon as I get a copy of that report, I'll put it on the website. I'll submit it to Mr. Grisbeck and we'll all have it. It'll show all the data, tables, maps.
I took your plant flow, which was expressed in.
Gallons a minute.
Gallons a minute and converted it to gallons per day, which was what, I mean, what my understanding was that the plant takes what?
750,000 gallons a day.
750,000 gallons a day. Seven hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. And so it looks to me like the, that, that on the worst days, you're ending up with almost a quarter of a million gallons...
Just in...
...excess flow from...
Sure.
From that terrible day when you increased to six hundred and seventy.
Sure. If you convert some of the storms we've had, the, so one of the biggest number I remember in the last year is like one point six million gallons in a day came to our plan. But, that's mind-boggling. I mean, we, we can handle seven hundred fifty thousand, and then we got one point six million. So, this is the beginning of a long road we're heading down to deal with a lot of that.
I guess in a way you, you expressed, you know, that looking at the, at the sunken sewer lids was, but are there inexpensive ways to go about doing some of this without having to meter and monitor and smoke and all of that stuff?
Um, there are, now that we know with the metering and the monitoring, the smoking, now we know, we have sufficient information that we can decide to do things either with a contractor or on our own. And some things we just simply can't do on our own.
Sure.
But I think there's quite a few things we can do, but, you know, we have to look at all the other issues that we look at with staff resources and all that stuff.
Can you give us kind of a, a basic idea of what percentage this represents of the work that needs to be done in the ten?
I don't know. I honestly do not know. We, we haven't, we haven't looked at the whole town, so we don't know what that variable is.
Six more basins?
Yeah, we, and there's a lot going on, but I think what we do know is that we have, we have plenty of information now to prioritize it and move forward without doing any more smoke testing or video work, really. Maybe some here and there, but we, we have a good information right now to get started.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Any worries?
Next item on the agenda is the new business. Jeff Jones, we are looking at planning board appointments and...
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board. This is an, an item for information and hopefully action within the coming meetings that we will have. When staff started, when I started in September, one of my first things I was like, I wanted to do was find out who my board was, and I asked Alice and my administrative assistant to sort of give me some details on who the planning board was and their expiration dates. And we come to find out that there was a couple of members that their expiration dates were in twenty fourteen, and we had a couple of members who was, whose term was expiring in twenty fifteen. So we pulled all that data together, and we're now here before you to sort of talk about appointing new members or reappointing members to the planning board. As you know, all know, and the public should know, is that we have six members on the planning board, two alternates. Three of those members are in-town members, three of those members are ETJ members. What we have, we have, one, two in-town members, full members, that their term has expired either in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen. We have an ETJ member whose term expired in twenty fourteen, and then we have an alternate member whose term expired in twenty fourteen as well. So what we would be asking the board to do is consider in-town membership and the rate of two in-town members, one ETJ member, and then one in-town alternate member. That's, that would bring the board whole again as to the current makeup of the board. This could be a time that the board, that the town board looks at the planning board and maybe corrects an imbalance that's on, on the board as well, is we have a ratio of fifty percent ETJ members and in-town members. The town doesn't have to have that type of ratio according to the general statutes of the state. I'm not sure how the town got to that point where we have a fifty-fifty split of in-town and ETJ members, but that's where we are. We could go down to as low as one ETJ member on the board and have the remaining five members as being in-town members. What we would do is then take the, the applications that you currently have in front of you, which all consist of in-town memberships. We don't have an ETJ member application currently. You would then appoint in-town memberships for those ETJ memberships, and we would draft a resolution to have before you get to the next board meeting. That is certainly the board's pleasure to, to discuss that. I know that's part of the UDO change that is being, that's being drafted and prepared for you all to, to talk about in the coming months. That's in Module One, if you're reading through that right now. But don't really have to make that decision tonight, it's just before you, that we could correct the imbalance that we have, or we could keep it the same. Kept it the same, you all would need to try to recruit some ETJ memberships to be on the board. And kind of here from there, I can try to answer any questions myself, or Lick can answer any questions that we have.
Well, I was thinking about the one question of how many members from each, and I know we went through a pretty rigorous calculation process.
Statistically, all you're required to have is one.
Yeah. But when we, wasn't there a requirement for board adjustment to be...
The same, same theory is, applies to board adjustment. Problem with board adjustment is you've got seven members on board adjustment, and you all never quite finished that.
And, excuse me?
You never quite did any alternates for board adjustment or anything like that, so...
But I remember us going through a pretty tedious calculation to talk about what happened. It was point five versus twenty-four nine.
In my opinion, it's a full fraction, not a point.
Right. And I think what we did is we tried to make it that, make it so...
You were generous.
Okay.
Well, you would still have six. And, and the, the way you would have, you would still have two ETJ members on the board.
You would have the current chairman, Rayford Bland, would be on, on the board, and then you would have Brian Taylor, who's an ETJ member on the board. So you would just, you would have four in-town memberships at, at this time. I think what the numbers are, are telling you is that at, at some point in time in the future, if one of those two members rotated off the board, you could replace that member with a, an in-town member, or you could keep it a four-two split to sort of continue to have a little bit more representation of the ETJ, but not have the fifty-fifty split.
I personally feel like with all the growth that's gonna be happening with ETJ, that they should have a voice, that's why I think that we should keep it a two. We should remove that, because so much of the growth is gonna happen with ETJ in the next few years.
I agree. Yeah, and we wouldn't be making a change to those two members this time. Those, those decisions would be in the future, when their, their terms expire. We would just be taking the ETJ membership that's, that for, for appointment today or this round, and we would replace that with an in-town member instead of...
And, you know, it is interesting that nobody signed up, nobody put in an application from the ETJ.
Right, right. Because the representation from the ETJ, the population from the ETJ is, is rather low. It's, it's probably somewhere around seventeen hundred folks, or a little bit more than seventeen hundred folks that live in the ETJ. Out of, you know, we have around forty-two hundred in population here in Pittsburgh. So maybe it's just not, not catching anyone's eye to serve on the planning board. I'm sure if you all recruited someone, that they would, wouldn't likely want to serve, but you certainly could, could make a change. If you made the change and, and adopted to go to a four-two split, then that would take one thing off the UDO discussion list, and we would just make it a four-two in the new UDO instead of how the UDO is currently being drafted, which was bring it down to a five-one, yeah.
Well, I agree completely that the, it's important to have representation from the ETJ. I do feel it's more appropriate to be a four-two. I think proportionally, it makes more sense to have those four members in town and two out of town, so I, I, I just could do that. Wouldn't we be able to expand the planning board at this stage?
I think that would be the next discussion that you would want to have. Instead of the makeup of the current board, you might want to bring that up during the, the UDO processes. It's expanding it from six members to potentially seven or eight memberships. That would be something that we could discuss, and you all could discuss at this board.
But the ETJ issue is proportional, so if you had seven or eight members, you still would have the issue of how many of those should be ETJ members, and that would relate to the population of the town, the population at ETJ. The town is relatively easy to get a figure for, the ETJ is not, it's a moving target. If you use center township, which is really the only census data available, that's not really the ETJ, because part of center is not an ETJ, and the ETJ is part of other townships as well, although that's mostly Chatham Park property and they're not involved in that. So it's really hard to get a figure on what the ETJ population is, and so you all have to use your best judgment and estimate that, but...
We might, we might get a better estimate if we asked for some collaboration between Board of Elections and the county GIS office, I'm guessing.
I've thought about doing that.
Get a head count for sure, it may not be a population...
Yeah, I've thought about trying to get a number of either addresses in the ETJ, giving them a shape, the county has a shape box, and try to get a number of addresses out of that, or just a number of homes. And then there's a, a median household size for Pittsburgh, and you apply that, whether it's three or two or what, what have you, you just apply that, multiply that by the number of houses that, that come up in the ETJ. I've, I've used that type of formula in other jurisdictions. So I've thought about that. I don't know if it's gonna get us any closer.
Sure.
I think it's gonna be around fifteen, seventeen hundred folks in, in the ETJ. I don't think it'll change the proportional ratio that we have. It might just help us know that that's what, a better guess of what it is. And, and one of the things that's gonna happen is, as Chatham Park continues to, to build and develop, they're gonna annex into town, and so all that land will then become in-town and not ETJ. So I think the ratio is always gonna be around one or two. Probably more like one, as it is today, unless we expand our ETJ for some reason and, and bring in ETJ land.
One of the other problems, the increase in the size of the board is that you may have form requirements that have to be met, and sometimes it's hard to get people to show up, so. We've had that trouble in the past, that you didn't have a forum, so you really couldn't take any action. So the larger that, that total number is, then the larger the number you have to have a forum, so you need to take that into consideration.
And our studies to show that bigger the board, it allows people to feel like they have to go.
Right.
And I'd have to say, I, I try to attend the planning board meetings and get to probably the majority of them, and I, I think that's been extremely rare that there wasn't a forum. In fact, alternates are typically sitting in the audience as well.
And, and I think interest is increasing as we grow.
But forums at Chatham Park was a problem.
And as we anticipate growing further. And, and I'm almost viewing this, this idea of the ratio, the four to two versus five to one, as a potential way, it's not just representation, representative democracy at really a small grassroots level, but it's perhaps an opportunity for us to give an outlet that might, I don't know, take some of the air out of litigation, you know, the, the, the passion, the desire to pursue litigation. If people really feel like they cannot have their say, or they can't be heard, then they're far more likely to litigate, in my opinion. And for that reason, I, I would favor having the four in-town to ETJ. And again, it goes back to my prior comments about the UDO. I think the five to one is just unacceptable, and I don't wanna go that, go that direction, I think. Well, I've had my, my say, said my piece on that piece, and I will mention it in, in, by way of apologizing, Jeff, that I erroneously received an application from Bob McConaughey.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that.
So I apologize if it got lost in the mix.
It did get lost in, in my mix of sending those to the town clerk to, to have in your packets. I have since, this meeting started, emailed that, that application to all of your email addresses, so once you, you get back, your workstations are home, you should have that in your email address, his application. So he should be considered, it was in time and I, and I accepted it, so he should be for consideration as well.
And I see we have Ray Bland, the chairman of the planning board, in the audience tonight. Is there anything, Ray, that you would like to say in support of, of the, what seems to be a likelihood on the board that, that, that we would move to the six-two, I mean, the four-two?
The, the, the tone of the conversations I hear throughout is merely appropriate or proportional or just an honest representation of the people, whatever it turns out to be. So if it's, as Mr. Messick says, if the half and half was overdoing it, well, that's fine, I just thought that was what it was. If it, I'm interested in it being, in fact, what it is. If it's, if it's more like six to two, that, I'm sure that's quite agreeable with everyone. I, I can't, I don't have any argument at all about that. The whole tone was, whatever the proportional representation is, should just be that and should remain so. And of course it's gonna change. If, 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 you know, I think it'd be delightful if we incorporated everything that's in the ETJ, you know, in which case, of course, you don't have to worry about that, you know? Sometime that will be for them at this point. And that's the whole point of the ETJ, that's expected to be grown in the town in some form. So when that happens, well, we will have, we will have this discussion. Until then, it's gonna remain flexible, and if six-two is appropriate, then that's fine.
You mean four-two?
Four-two, yeah. Four-two, right.
Yeah. This may make the ETJ member whose term expired twenty fourteen not reapplying, it may give you a, an opportunity to replace that board member with an in-town member without much change, much, there's not, you're not, not reapplying the ETJ member, you're just not, you're just moving in a different direction.
So we were to do the four-two this evening, and we would like three in-town members and one in-town alternate.
Yes.
Well, and I'll tell you, I could, I could lose Shannon.
We just, yes, we advertised two weeks for ETJ.
Well, I'll tell you, I did a little recruiting this afternoon, because I think Shannon's a really important member of that board, but he's, he's got other plans that are gonna prevent him from serving. So it's unfortunate, 'cause I think he, local businessman, very practical, sensible gentleman, logical guy. I thought he has always been a contributing member to the board and a valued one, but I don't think he's, he's, he's not.
Yeah. And I, and I'm not looking forward to you all to appoint tonight, that would be in two weeks, so if you did want us to continue with an advertisement on the website or anything like that, we could do that. Or you all could go out and recruit folks as well, and then have, have a fuller discussion on the folks before you, if they were, if you did have ETJ applicants in front of you, then that might change your, your opinion of, of, of course, to change. You may want, there may be an ETJ member that you really want on the board... You may want, there may be an E T J member that you really want on the board, then you would be inclined to keep it at a three-three at this, at present, and then maybe change the makeup of the board at some other time.
When you first mentioned it, I didn't think I was ready to make that change. But I think I am. I can build a four-two. I think it is the way to go. Still have to do it this evening. Someone else is interested.
My pleasure, the board.
We wait for the two weeks where you're going to start doing this project.
And if we go four-two, then we recruit four advertisers for E T J.
Wait. Who are the two, who are the two E T J members? There doesn't one. Shannon.
You shot that. I'm trying to.
Yes. But if we go four-two.
I'm thinking, who's the current?
Current is Mr. Bland and Brian Taylor, who are current E T J, and they will continue to serve in their capacities and could be reappointed, or someone other in the E T J could be appointed with their seat if they choose not to be reappointed. Would that make up a four-two?
Ray forces the chair. Brian is another very good member.
I would point three-two. Don't want alternate.
That's correct.
We don't have an E T J alternate, though.
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
Not losing that person?
No, I think it's.
David.
Wayne.
Wayne Hurt.
Yeah, Wayne Hurt.
Yeah, I thought I'd heard that he would have expired.
No, his term is still active. It's used now.
Actually, myself, I'm comfortable with the four-two, so the E T J, four in-town. And I do hate that Mr. Plummer did not want to send you because he was, he had a lot to be planning for work in, by being a local businessman.
So we make a change of four-two and you appoint at the next meeting, is that sort of the direction you're thinking, Mr. Piaco?
Yeah. So you could have. Actually, yeah, because I tried not to recruit this effort. I have tried to merely inform folks that the opportunity existed, that applications were being sought. And when I had a conversation earlier in the week and before we had this deliberation, I did, I felt like I kind of put myself out there and mentioned to some folks in the E T J that there were applications, were probably needed. And I'm not sure how that shakes out with this.
Is there a motion? Is there a request to delay? My pleasure, the board.
I'll make a question, that'd be convert the planning board to a four-two membership, four members from the town, two members from the E T J.
Motion made by Michael Piaco to convert to the four-two plan. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Jay Farrell. Further discussion. Those in favor, please indicate by seeing aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The board wish to pursue the appointments or to wait until the following meeting?
I think we need to wait because there's an application for the, and that was first thing.
Yeah, I'll have something more prepared for you on the second, maybe to help you with the appointments.
For purposes of your appointments, you have terms that ended in fourteen and fifteen. So when you appoint someone, you need to make sure that you're appointing to whichever term it is that you're applying.
Yeah, that's what I'll try to detail out for you is an appointment for this seat is good for only two years because it's retroactively going backward. I'll help you with that motion in two weeks.
Thank you, Jeff Joe.
So how will that take place? We'll just pick one at a time.
Yes.
All right. So we have additional updates and reports first from Brian Grisbeck.
I will be brief, if you don't mind. The Sanford sanitary sewer line extension, you know, you will recall the background on that. Over the course of the next couple of weeks, what we'll be doing is talking to the city of Sanford and securing a financial consultant to kind of prepare us for these next steps. The Sanford conversations will be essentially such a groundwork for an intergovernmental agreement and get that prepared and do something that is advantageous, I think, long-term to the town, fair to Sanford as well. So we'll have more to report for you with the next meeting on that. I have, I also included in your packet the letter from, the notice of intent fund letter from the evolving fund program from the Anna provides to have a fair outline for when different milestones will need to be reached and we'll be providing you some more information and background on that as some of these other things can deal. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call or stop by the office. Master plan elements, we, at this point in time, unless Jeff compliment, compliment all the staff that was in attendance tonight, but Jeff was playing hurt tonight, has what could be strep throat, and I think he might have ducked out a year or so. And I would ask him, but as of right, to my knowledge right now, we do not have judicial elements in hand. So we will let you know and make sure that you are aware when we do receive them. We'll be providing additional information on that as well. Salisbury Street storm drain improvements, everything is basically done on that, is my understanding, with the exception of restoration work with final asphalt, and that's going to be contractor and weather dependent. So hopefully we can stick and forth on that one fairly soon. New office space, Hobbs is, as of today, I believe, moved out. Town staff anticipates moving in this week, and so we're trying to complete final arrangements for that. We're pretty excited about it. And when we do, when the dust starts clearing through that, we're going to have to talk a little bit maybe about how we want to do that because I think there's some furniture that's scheduled to arrive a little bit later, but maybe it might be appropriate to have somewhat of a, a not too wild and crazy community event that's around the process just so that people are aware of where we're at and how to get there. Finance director replacement, we've got two interviews scheduled this week. I'd like to follow up some interviews with staff on that before we make the decision. So we'll be looking forward. We're placing some big shoes there. And then also too, with the board retreat, Mr. Long asked me to pass along his thanks as, I don't know if you caught toward the end of, toward the end of the retreat, it sounds like he's trying to ease into retirement, but I think I might have saw him out of it by the end of it. So he said, and then even afterwards, he confirmed with an email, and we were going back and forth last week, that, yeah, anything you guys want to do, he's more than, for Pittsburgh, he's more than happy to show up and do whatever. So if we did, I heard you guys a few minutes ago talk a little bit more about doing some more focused discussion. If you recall, I think Commissioner Baldwin was talking about the, was talking about a mid-year sort of check-in, and that might be something that we consider as well, just to see how we go with this. Just one other thing, one other thing I'd mention too, the, we had talked a little bit about workshops in previous meetings, and I have, I do have some thoughts for how we can accommodate some workshop discussions without necessarily creating additional meetings. And I can put these recommendations into a memo for more discussion at the next meeting, but I would preface by saying that I think we can, again, stress that, I think we can do it with our current getting structure. It would take a little bit, it would take a little bit of an evolution, maybe on staff's part and a little bit maybe on the board's part as well, but that would essentially be to take the first meeting of the month and reserve that, reserve the biggest portion of that meeting for workshop discussion, allowing for some consent agendas, consent agenda approvals. And if there's something that absolutely had to be on the agenda for white discussion approval, then we can tackle it at that point as well. I know there's been some discussion about allowing citizen comments and, you know, the tight rope of allowing citizen comments versus, you know, regardless of what's on the agenda versus the way we currently have a bylaw right now, which is to prohibit citizen comments if there's, you know, to prohibit citizen comments that are geared towards things that are already on the agenda. If we did evolve to more of a workshop first meeting, then I would probably recommend that we limit citizen comments to things that are not necessarily on the agenda for purpose of keeping that workshop discussion clean because that will not allow, I mean, the workshop is most beneficial when you guys have a chance to, you guys have a chance to discuss these things, you know, in a very, in a very tight setting amongst yourselves. It's not necessarily a closed meeting, but it's a closed discussion, if that makes any sense. I'm going to put, I'm going to put a couple ideas together, you guys can chew on that a little bit too, in the meantime. And then the other thing too, that I mentioned, that I mentioned previously in very retreat is with regards to communications and Mayor Perry referenced the meeting that we had with a firm to help with, to help streamline and make transparent a lot of our communications that deal specifically with Chad and Park, but also some other issues as well. One of the most recent check-in conference call that I had with them, we talked about developing, as we continue to develop the strategy for that, they want some input from you guys on how, you know, what are sort of the real, I would say, pressure point issues with regards to Chad and Park. So in a nutshell, if you guys could think, you know, wherever you guys go in your travels in and around town, or even in elevators elsewhere in the Triangle or North Carolina or anywhere in the country, what are the questions that you get about? Think about that. So you don't have to answer them, okay? But think about that, and I will be calling on you in the near future because by the time I talk to these guys, I want to have a pretty good idea for some, to give them some feedback on what we're dealing with so then they can come and attend a meeting and then kind of, we can start to begin to roll out some things as far as how, you know, we as a team and organization are going to handle the flow of information as, you know, this stuff happens, it's going to happen, it's going to happen, you know, it's already in a way happened a lot quicker in some ways than maybe we anticipated. However, we want to make sure that we're staying ahead of these issues and messages, not creating propaganda, but creating communications. And so that's, that's the role on this report. So again, think about the questions that you guys receive, and then I'll be, I'll be following up with you guys and we'll pass that information. There are no right, wrong, or indifferent answers on that. It's in the communication. Adam, thank you.
Thank you. We're next, Commissioner's concerns, but if you would allow me to do so, there were two things that I wanted to mention that I forgot to do earlier in the meeting, but we all received from Elaine Kioso an email that referenced the continuing concern about the one-four dioxide in the water. And she was urging that email to us to take some kind of follow-up action to the information that we received at the board meeting back before John and I came on the board, which was like October, I don't remember, somewhere in there. The article that she, that she attached to her email was Sanford watches and waits for dioxide action. And both Sanford and Fayetteville, in addition to was concerned about this. And when I talked to Brian Grisbeck this past week, I thought to myself that, I think it's really important for us to be reactive to this news. And I would be willing to try to set up informational meetings with mayors upstream from us so that we could ask them for their cooperation, so that we could ask them for their assistance in solving this problem with our water and with that of Sanford and Fayetteville, who are also affected. When I talked to John briefly before the meeting, he seemed to think that perhaps a motion might be in order to authorize me to go forward with that kind of engagement, but I'd also be willing to have any interested members of the board attend those meetings with me.
It's a quite important issue. I think, you know, we did have a report from scientists who said, you know, there are spikes occurring, and there is risk, and understood that they were going to go meet with people upstream and try to figure this out, and that certainly would appreciate an update as to what those findings were, trying to, you know, get a better handle on this risk. And I read all the things about Flint, it just seems that, you know, I'd hate to.
No, you can't.
And unfortunately, I think, very simple inquiry into Flint, it seems, might have done more to prevent or minimize the issue. So I think it's critically important, I mean, without the water, you know, we don't have any of here, so I would support your efforts to get more information.
That's my opinion. So. For the discussion.
Well, just one thing, I'll just, I should go to the committee. They were supposed to individual step on that to our attention, let us to check with the towns upstream and maybe contact them first and see if they actually have, and just update us also on that. I think it's great, and it is very, very, very. And I appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, and that doesn't look well because obviously we're going to need to be talking to these people during the week, when you're more available. So that's one. Do we need to make that as a motion? Or just note the general approval or opposition?
I would like you to have the strength of some formal recognition of the importance this board feels. I will comment, though, having studied a lot of different risks and such in my life, the, my understanding of the risk in the dioxide is that this is not something that we should be alarmed about. It is something we should be concerned about, it is something that we should do our very best to track down and persuade those upstream to address the problem so that the contaminant is not entering the waste stream or the water, the river, which is our source of water. I feel strongly about it also. I got a kid with some real health problems right now, and so we have to always think about what it is that, as we're ingesting, what's entering our lives, our environment, how we're exposed to contaminants. I remember though, just last week, having someone speak to me about Pittsburgh's water, and I had to explain to them actually, the T H M problem, or T C, T C H M. T T H M has been addressed, and we can be satisfied and pleased that at least that problem is gone for years now, that we're, we're, our tests are clean, we're hitting records on how low that contaminant is. And I'd really hate for it to become another alarmist thing where I'm hearing on the street, oh, you can't drink Pittsburgh's water. This does seem to be a very transient contaminant, and it's a trace, very trace contaminant. The risks are not well-understood, but that's just it, the risks are not well-understood, and so we should push to have the problem resolved. And Cindy, excuse me, Mayor Perry, I think that you're very well qualified to have that kind of personal conversation. that kind of personal conversation with other local governments upstream. And, um, I'm afraid that, um, given our certain, our current circumstances, that it's gonna take that kind of persuasion rather than, uh, seeking regulatory, uh, solutions. Uh, I just think that it's probably gonna go much faster and smoother if we try and collaborate and encourage. Thank you. So I'm not quite sure how to word that, um, formal endorsement of you as the representation for our town. I move that we resolve, the town of Pittsburgh resolve, uh, that Cindy Perry, uh, will communicate with other local governments to pursue a solution to this contamination problem in our water.
You've heard the motion by John Bonis, is there a second? Sorry. Second to Michael Fiocco for the discussion. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to simply state was this afternoon about 4:30, I got a phone call from the Water Infrastructure Environmental Group of, um, of what used to be Deaner, but now is, um, DEQ. And, um, uh, this gentleman is seeking to have, uh, meetings with, uh, perhaps with, uh, Fred Boyle and, and perhaps with Brian Grusbeck and myself to talk about, um, the application and the Clean Water Revolving Fund, um, loan and, and go into some greater detail about, uh, what, uh, what the application promises to do and how, uh, I, I gather that they're trying to reestablish sort of, uh, intergovernmental communications between us and them. And they said that, uh, that they would like to have a meeting with us and so we'll...
Who is that?
Um, we threw out two dates and...
Who is, who did you get email from?
Uh, well, I, I got, um, Ken Holig is his name. And he and Anita Reed and Seth Robertson want to sit and meet with, with the group. So, um, we'll, we'll work toward a, a date that might be convenient. But I thought that was a very interesting entreaty to have the, the state folks wanting to meet with the local government people to improve communications. So, Commissioner's concerns?
I just have one, is, um, still regarding the Sanford sewer line. With this loan that, that we applied for a few months back, it seemed like this loan came through quicker than any loan, I believe, since I've been on the board. Um, I'm still in concern that what, uh, Chatham Park is gonna bring to the table because of, at this time, I'm, I'm not gonna be, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna support this loan for that kind of money for a town right now. I just, you know, they need to come up with some, some type of funding, that's what I feel about that. Um, you know, we are doing this for them and they should bring some kind of funding to the table.
They have a great guarantee.
On the loan.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we don't have, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of steps and we can, I think this will be one of our initial workshops instead of talking about it. There are a number of steps that have to happen before we even have a, a loan agreement in place, so...
That's good news.
LGC's gonna wanna look at a lot of these things to make sure that we're solving them. So I had a really good conversation with Commissioner Bonis the other day about it. Um, it's, it's gonna get interesting.
Okay. Bye.
Yep. Yeah. I'll, I'll echo those concerns and, and reflect back on the very positive conversation I had with the town manager. I am reassured, uh, by these new communications from Chatham Park investors. But, um, I'm even wondering if that option is the best option for this town, going to Sanford, um, whether or not, um, the timing could be right for us to focus instead on beefing up our current sewage treatment plant to the extent it's possible on-site while simultaneously pursuing the grand plant that I think most of us know is in our future, um, the large new sewage treatment plant. Um, I understand that the line to Sanford, uh, will give us kind of a breathing room because of the little, um, allow us to send, uh, wastewater or sewage, um, when our plant hits those peak, peak times. Um, and I understand also that planning a grand new plant, a large new plant, as Brian Grusbeck has explained to me, um, that would be a very significant investment of time, a long lead time, um, towards that. And we may need to see more of the actual construction that Chatham Park, Park is proposing, um, before we need to go in that direction. Um, I just, I just wonder if now really is the time for us to, um, build a pipeline to another town, uh, whether or not that's really needed right now.
I mean, as you guys will recall in the, the workshops and then, then the resolution to ultimately approve the application to the state, um, that outlines that particular option, one of the things that, um, one of the things that was discussed and agreed on at the time was, and you and I had discussed this as well, was that, that the wastewater plant, given some of the physical limitations and spatial limitations and technological limitations of our existing wastewater plant, that making any kind of significant expansion of the wastewater plant on-site would be problematic at best. And so the, the reason for the Sanford extension was to get, get the two MGD, um, at a time when, when the community, uh, anticipates the need for it, anticipating that there will be, that there will be other systems that are gonna come online, um, down the road that will more significantly address the problems and, and as you said, become a lot more, um, a lot more needed as time goes on. And you guys will recall the, the development and the capacity curve that, that we looked at and there were a number of iterations that we considered. And, uh, and yeah, uh, I, I don't think that there's any plan whatsoever to completely disregard or discard our existing plant. Uh, in fact, in fact, the opposite cautious decision was made either. Um, and to kind of at some point in time, um, put it in a position for, uh, long-term for reuse. But also the hetero path against development, uh, not occurring, uh, I think coming out of the gate with a ten MGD or, uh, or with a, excuse me, with a, with a plant that's, that's sort of a regional facility plant, planning for that, I think is, is, is definitely hitting a small nail with a large hammer, definitely, and we don't necessarily need to do it at, at a considerable expense. So, yeah, I can certainly appreciate those concerns and there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion, I think, that hasn't taken place between now and then. Uh, but, uh, you know, this was, this was again, a lot of, a lot of time, work and discussion went into it to this point. Um, you know, so we'll see how this, see how this all plays out.
Actually, after that, that was staff's recommendation too also as the contract.
Well, it's, it, we, we looked at three or four different options.
Right.
And so, so we, you know, there, there was an option, there was consideration to you to make the, to make the total standard, you know, to just simply, you know, initially abandon all of our operations and go with, go with a, a more robust Stanford Sanford line. Um, that, uh, that we didn't feel like was most appropriate, given that we have an operating plant, given that we provide reuse water. And, uh, so the decision, I think, the option, this is, this is the option was made to kind of, have phase in improvements as, as, as was appropriate for the development that was necessary. So we'll see. We've got a lot of work to do. It's gonna get more interesting.
Other Commissioner's concerns?
I have a question. I've noticed, uh, on the Millbrook at Powell Place, um, it seemed to be they're preparing that road to be paved. Is this an example of the developers getting the road up to parse of the town to take it over, or is it the town ready to repaint their road?
It's a punchless item that, uh, that Powell Place is completing or not. We aren't capitalizing.
Maybe they have a long list of punchless that they, with hope they're gonna do last fall or I think.
Well, they, we wanted it last fall, they said this, they said spring, so...
I didn't remember Millbrook, I mean, uh, you know, Millbrook being on that, cause I mean, I don't...
Towards the very end of it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's all I have already mentioned, uh, about law, that's super high, I'm thinking of that, but I just, um, it's, it's, they're gonna be uptown, um, watch your team go and try to get those solutions before they're, if that, if that, if that way.
And I think Brian Grusbeck, and you have been corresponding about...
Yeah.
The possibility of your drafting, that would be lovely if you, if you...
I was just gonna get it first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Whatever he needs to do.
Fine. Thank you. Sorry for that.
I'm still looking for the information from the Calarian group. I haven't managed that, but, um, I'm still looking for it. Yeah. Um, I think this is a long overdue task for, uh, staff for cleaning up the silt fence posts there at Port School. That is the former erosion control for the project that never was, that cleared a lot and started to grow back and as too often occurs, folks don't clean up after themselves and these posts end up in the middle of woods. Sometimes everybody gets to get the sidewalk. So, like, they're a real hazard, they're dangerous and I'd ask months ago for them to be removed and, uh, so...
They are gone.
Yeah, they are gone.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I'm still, um, trying to get this affordable housing thing going and we, we, we need to make a decision on when we can do this. Robert said he could meet any Thursday. Uh, it was good to get one day and one of that's it. So, any Thursday, um, Brian, I think you were gonna do a doodle. Does it make sense to do it some other way at this point?
Well, I, I did a doodle on the special assessment district. I didn't do a doodle on, I didn't doodle over one. I didn't...
I thought you were gonna doodle, love.
Okay. I, I can't.
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, if Robert said, I think, four o'clock on a Thursday, he could be here.
I only got one response back to the doodle I did.
No, that's, I don't see, I didn't see that. I didn't, I didn't doodle, it looked like everybody's name was on it. I'm like, please.
Brian, I, I, I...
I just think you're right. That's what I thought about Chicago.
Uh, Mayor Perry responded.
I think that was the only one.
I responded.
She, she always responds to that.
Uh, that's what I'm thinking of, yeah.
So there was a UDO on, I think, the chat.
I don't know if I saw that one.
It seemed like a great idea, right?
Do you wanna try to see what people think about the 10th of March? That's a Thursday, it's after our next board meeting.
I unfortunately have great children, I think, and they were certain...
Should we try for that?
Uh, just a moment.
No?
I just say just a moment, March 10th?
Yeah.
I can do it.
What's that?
Four on...
That would be, yeah. But I, I can do it on March 10th.
Sure.
After five, about 3:00?
About 3:00.
Five thirty would be here for Pam?
Yeah. Affordable housing.
I've had this sort of overwhelming feeling that, that we're waiting for a certain product to hit the fan and as we sit here and wait for these additional elements to come and it just, I expressed to Michael Fiocco the other day when we were chatting that I feel like we need to be doing something. And affordable housing seems to be the thing that may take the longest period of time and it, and the greatest amount of creativity. And I don't wanna just be reactive to what it is that they bring, although they've got the legal responsibility to bring it to us, but I want us to be prepared for it.
I know what you want.
Yeah. And there's a wonderful line from a Dr. Seuss book that I used to read to children, which was, "If I ran the zoo, here's what I'd do." And, um, and I think about that often and I'd really like for us to know in our own hearts and minds what, what we will, what we wanna say about some of these issues that are so incredibly complex and are gonna take so much of our time upcoming. So maybe if we would just all individually think about that and then tackle this affordable housing one, which is gonna be really, really complicated.
I wonder if gentrification is part of that zoo or is that, is that really means related? But it's a different topic.
Yeah. Because it certainly has.
And increasing density.
So let's look at, send out an email and, and looking at March 10th at 5:30. Um, and those of us that don't have calendars, you can, you can...
I think most everybody's, that doesn't have calendars, have to do it, so unless we hear otherwise.
I don't think I have anything, I appreciate you, don't know, so maybe you should be mine.
Okay. Okay.
The only other thing, Thursday after me, we have a meeting last week.
Yeah, yeah, I mean... The only thing else I'll mention is, I am gonna be in Atlanta, latter part of next week and I do think I'm gonna be able to get a tour of the Henry wastewater treatment thing.
Love your...
Yeah.
That's a good one. I'm looking at your trip as well.
Exactly. I'm gonna shoot some video.
I'm trying.
I'm gonna shoot some video.
Cell phone, maybe.
Yeah. I'll get the crew there. That's all I have.
I don't have anything. Other things? I'm just trying to figure out how I can, I've got a trip to Seattle next week, but I'm trying to think of how I can, Merkle wastewater treatment, and with the bot mitzvah going.
You have a piece of...
Was that Jamie's third place, the one go?
Yeah, exactly.
Might check out the earthquake problem out there while you're there.
Earthquake problem? Computer school management, that's...
Did they, did they, guys have... Tsunami, you know, all those issues, big trouble there.
Salmon fisheries.
Medical marijuana.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, but, I can...
Pam Baldwin and Beth Shaw, then adjourn.